I'm going to call to order this regular meeting of the Page County School Board.
Mr. Painter.
Yes.
Ms. Alger?
Yes.
Mr. Overfelt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Please pause for a minute of silence as we prepare for the meeting tonight. Join me up front. You're going to be right up here first for pictures. They're going to come here in front of everybody. And I'm going to give this to you. Okay, I'll hold it and I'll give it to you.
All right, so this AP's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Ms. Melody Carter. Melody is a fifth grade student at Springfield Elementary School and is the daughter of Christopher and Christina Carter. She's an A B student who works very hard at school. Melody is known for her kindness and willingness to help others, whether it's assisting her classmates or supporting her school in various ways. She has even had the opportunity to lead a pledge of allegiance, you practice this a lot, haven't you? During the morning announcements alongside Dr. Carroll. Outside of school, Melody is active in sports, enjoying both soccer and basketball. She also loves spending time with her family and attending church. One of her favorite activities is joining her parents and church members to deliver food to senior citizens who are unable to leave their home. Melody's compassionate spirit and eagerness to help others makes her a true role model. Melody, thank you for your hard work, your kindness, and your dedication to making a positive impact in your school and community. Congratulations on being chosen as a pledge leader for Springfield Elementary School. Would everyone please stand for that, Melody? Can we call the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He made me see.
Melody, I'm going to have you come run some meetings for me. Good job.
Yes. Dr. Fox, do you have any agenda changes or additions?
We do. We have one this evening. We're going to add an action item under Section 8. Item 8.04 for approval. We're going to make an adjustment to the school board meeting schedule for the remainder of this year.
I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
A second.
Motion by Ms. Alger and a second by Ms. Sullivan Smoot to approve the agenda as amended.
Ms. Alger?
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Ms. Brian?
Yes.
Mr. Overfelt?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Smoot?
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I would like to certify that personnel matters discussed in closed session this evening were in order with Section 2.2-3711A1.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Sullivan Smoot and a second by Ms. Alger to certify personnel matters discussed in closed session.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Ms. Brian?
Yes.
Mr. Overfelt?
Yes.
Ms. Alger?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We had a comment online. Let me have one.
We have one.
One here to speak.
One.
You go ahead. Can you come up to the microphone? I'm going to read this statement real quick before you get started. The Page County School Board welcomes citizen comment during regular meetings. School board members do not respond to public comment during a meeting. All comments should address a matter related to Page County Public Schools. The school board will not hear public comment that involves an individual's student-related matter, the disclosure of which would violate applicable confidentiality requirements. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for students how one can respectfully agree or disagree with others' views. Speakers will address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member nor to the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. Speakers will have three minutes to present their comments from the podium.
It can't be about a student. It has to be just a general thing about schools or can a student be?
Should not probably mention a student. It cannot be student-specific. Not by name. You can say my student, yes, but not by name.
So I would just speak as far as the use of Facebook apps and apps and everything in general to disseminate official information. Many people don't use Facebook. I can't use Facebook. I don't use Facebook. Governor Mexico, Kerry Oates, in 2012, I saw somebody on Facebook way before. Now, the next thing that happened is I found out, I discovered, but I did speak because she goes to doing the Magic School AI. And I'm just like, okay, this is going to be long. And then the next thing that happened is something happened that flipped me into, no, this isn't an issue. Okay, apps in schools used by teachers and apps used by the schools. Okay, I got handed out saying that I needed to log into Magic School, ClassGO, in order to get my son's behavioral records. And so I'd like definitely, and sure enough, in in the state law, 22 long speech. 22 It's a limitation on our record. So teacher, principal, or employee of any public school or any public school or child member, government, any record of any particular people enrolled in school or classroom, except for their teacher. Okay, so putting these records in ClassGO creates this law. You are de facto making a school record for a child in a third-party app. How that app uses the information, I'll allow them to bring up about that, which I don't have time to tell you all. My background was in programming, 20 years, professional government contractor to start with, and then the doctor program for another eight years, and left having a W S program set up for a baby. Anyway, I know what I'm talking about. Okay, they're creating these records in these there, but these are going to be shared. Okay, they're telling you all, tell our information, they're sharing that information to their advertisers, which is why you get them, how they make their money. You have to do all their health information, everything else to see that while they say how private they are and how they need the regulation, you do not read Virginia regulation about you cannot share a student's record when outside third-party without parental consent. One of the things I've said it's not to do is if you get parental consent, what happens with that? If the teacher sent me a, then sent me a ClassGO, my phone number, who then sent me a text message. Now, I'm very private, as you probably realize already, nobody has my phone number or access to that message. I don't use that app. I logged into Google on my Android. I did data, and loaded all my cell. Okay, so nobody had access to my data. Suddenly, starting Monday, after I say this, I get seven in the last five days, including a phone call the day where I was writing a speech op from a company where someone named Tiffany, with the name of Tiffany, and with my phone number, applied for a loan. Okay, which could possibly be whatever, whether or not that was related to the fact that my phone number was given out to ClassGO, and then this was the day that.
That's your time.
Yes.
That's your free time. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. A motion by Ms. Brian, actually first, Mr. Overfelt, sorry, and then the second by Ms. Sullivan Smoot to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Brian?
Yes.
Mr. Overfelt?
Agreed, yes.
Ms. Alger?
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Smoot?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so we have another recognition, Ms. Katie Thompson-Sowers. Do you want to join me up front?
All right, so Springfield Elementary School is thrilled to recognize Mrs. Katie Thompson-Sowers as our Volunteer of the Month. Mrs. Thompson-Sowers is a dedicated parent who actively participates in school field trips with her daughter and has generously volunteered countless hours to support our school community. Last year, when Springfield Elementary did not have a full-time art teacher, Mrs. Thompson-Sowers stepped in to provide art instruction for all grade levels, ensuring our students continue to receive creative learning experiences. She is extremely creative. She also continues to substitute in our classrooms whenever she can. As a PTO member, Mrs. Thompson-Sowers has contributed food and meals for staff on special event, special event days. This year, she went above and beyond on opening day by giving faculty and staff members massages, making the start of the school year extra. There's one extra, but I'm going to add in like extra, 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 extra. Thank you, Mrs. Thompson-Sowers, for your incredible support and dedication to our student staff. Congratulations on being named Springfield Elementary's volunteer.
Yeah, let me just make you.
So you all are welcome to stay for the rest of this meeting, or you could go and enjoy the rest of your rainy evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we have instructional highlights from Springfield Elementary School, Dr. Martina Carroll and Ms. Kerry Owens. And Ms. Kathleen Fox.
Hello.
Hello.
I sense there's so many of them.
We need you to be in front of the mic for online.
Sorry. Okay, then I will move this way. Thank you. So thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. So I'm Dr. Martina Carroll. I have Ms. Kerry Owens, my Dean of Students, and Ms. Kathleen Kime, who is the Instructional Coach. I forgot to say, I'm the principal. So we're going to give you some of our highlights this evening. We have several reasons to celebrate, which we will get into a little bit later, but I always wanted to start off with something positive. We are fully accredited this year. We have decreased our chronic absenteeism rate from an 18% down to a 13%. We have two fully certified special education teachers. I'm not something to celebrate. We have a certified alternative education teacher as well. We've created over the years a very nice partnership with the Rileyville Rortons, and we have continued family engagement. On the bottom, you can just see some of our accreditation standards. So we're going to jump into our instructional data. I will start with language arts, English first. As you can see in the graph, I'm not 100% sure why the VDOE put it this way this year, because usually they will show growth and recovery. So for some reason, this year, we have our raw score. So just students who straight up passed our language arts SOL in grades three through five, we had 73% of students who passed. But when we add in our growth and recovery, we went to an 83% pass rate. This year, one of our focus points, and we'll get into that slide in just a few minutes as well, we are looking at our students with disabilities. So we had 47% of our students with disabilities pass the language arts SOL last year, the reading SOL last year. So that's something that we are going to focus on this year, and you'll see some of those highlights in the next few slides. Next, we have our math data. Our raw score was an 82%, so just a straight raw score of students passing. We had 82% of our students pass. With growth and recovery, that number went up to 87% of students. Again, students with disabilities fell a little bit below the mark where we wanted to see them at a 69% pass rate. So that is another focal point that we are looking at this year on helping those students grow and increase. But as you can see, over the past three years, we have had pretty solid scores in our math, and I think you saw that in our language arts as well. So science does not have any growth or recovery, so this is just a raw score of students who've passed. And for science, only fifth grade takes that science SOL. And we have had 76% of our students pass this year, which again is very consistent with years past, the two previous years, that 74 and 75% pass rate. Same thing with history. This is given in fourth grade. Again, there's no growth or recovery because they don't take it the previous year. So our raw score pass rate is a 91%, very consistent with years past as well. So now we're going to talk about our chronic absenteeism. Again, I said that we went from an 18.13%, and we actually brought it down to a 12.75%, but VDOE likes to round up, so that's why I put 13% before. So as you can see, two years ago, we had around a 16% chronic absenteeism rate. Then we went up to an 18%, and we put in a lot of efforts. You're going to hear from these ladies in just a few minutes about some of the efforts that we're putting forth even more this year. But those efforts were very effective, and we got down to a 12.75% pass rate, or chronic absenteeism rate. So as I mentioned before, we have school improvement goals that we're always looking at and focusing, and that's what helps drive our instruction. I have a building leadership committee, which is made up of all grade level teachers, encore, and then our special education teachers. We meet monthly and we discuss our school goals, how we're progressing, and then steps on how we can move forward. So this year, by May 2025, Springfield Elementary School, we want to take our reading SOL pass rate for our students with disabilities from a 46.67% to an 80% pass rate. That sounds like a lot. I was crunching some of those numbers today, and really, that comes out to be about seven students more that we need to pass. By May of 2025, we want to increase our math SOL pass rate for our students with disabilities from a 68.75 to an 80% pass rate. And when I was crunching those numbers, again, that's actually only two students that we need to pass. So we can do it. And then we want to still continue to monitor our chronic absenteeism rate, so 15% or above is chronically absent. And that kind of puts us in that Level 2 area. So we want to continue to monitor this, and we want to further decrease it from 12.75 to a 10% chronic absenteeism rate. So some of our instructional focus efforts and supports, I'm going to pass this over to Ms. Kime, since she is our Instructional Coach. She's going to talk to you a little bit about what we're implementing this year for language arts and math.
We're implementing all the high-quality instructional materials for reading that we've been asked by the state of Virginia. We've been very fortunate, Springfield, that the majority of our teachers had vast experience with a lot of these materials. So that's made the implementation a much easier process. And our teachers that have needed instruction or extra help have asked for it, have reached out and said, hey, I want to know more about this. I want to learn how to do that. We've utilized Lexia and iXL reports to kind of give us a lot more feedback and let, tell us things that we didn't know about our kids. We actually were very kind of guarded going into the new VOWs assessment because we weren't sure. We were afraid that some of the kids that we thought were okay may turn out to be identified and vowed. And then after all of the data came back, we were very pleased to find that all of the children we had already worried about were the ones that needed to, that we hadn't missed. So that's a really good feeling. We implemented reading and math quick facts at the beginning of encore classes. So in typing and library, we do what we call time-time math, which is just flat fluency. It takes about three to five minutes out of the class period, and they do that. And then for reading, we've been working on some time-repeated readings to work on our fluency. Our special education teachers are diving right in. They are planning lessons with our teachers. We are co-teaching. They're looking at the teacher's lesson plans a little bit in advance, so they know what's coming and how to adapt that for their students and differentiate different materials. We have monthly data meetings where we all meet as a team, and we talk about what's going well, what do we need help with. We're doing coaching cycles as needed. We're also pulling in our teaching assistants and providing from some support and instruction for them because we're asking them to take on, like for Lexia, I reached out to our representative. I said, hey, I want my teaching assistants to be able to use Lexia, but they don't know the teacher side. All they know is the kid side. Help us teach them. And so we had a BD so that our teaching assistants could kind of take the reins and know what they were doing.
So then we're going to look at our chronic absenteeism. So last year, Ms. Kime and I worked very closely on putting some supports in place, and as you can see, that really did help us bring down that chronic absenteeism rate. Ms. Kerry Owens is new to us this year, so we brought her on board to help us continue that effort with chronic absenteeism. So we all three sat down together and looked at the Page County Public Schools guide, like policy to absenteeism, like when to make phone calls and when to have attendance meetings. And we started to have a discussion about, you know, they get this letter, and it's always not the friendliest letter, and it might put some people on guard. And our goal for decreasing chronic absenteeism is not to make parents feel that they're doing anything wrong. It's to help support them, because sometimes they do just need support in getting their child to school. So the three of us sat down, and we created a guide that goes along with Page County's guide. Ms. Owens, well, have it.
Yeah, so we set up a system where Ms. Kime sends a letter home first, once they get, we kind of set up an excuse part, so if there's like, I think three, I think it's a first, unexcused, then we send a letter home. And then once it gets to five, I think, unexcused for me, then I make the phone call. Most of them send in letters, so we move more to the combined. So once they get to six, Ms. Kime will send a letter home there. And then once it gets to me at nine, I'll kind of make a positive phone call home. So far this year, I've made five phone calls already. And it's just more of a phone call to say like, hey, you know, just noticed your child's been out. What can we do to support you? How can we help you? And it's been really positive. The parents have been super appreciative of the phone calls. And then I do kind of give them a heads up, like, hey, once you get to this number, you know, you will have to speak with Dr. Carroll. Not to make her the bad guy, but she kind of comes in at the end. And then once it gets to the certain number, then they have a meeting with Dr. Carroll.
Yep. We have also given this information out to parents at our open house and literacy night, so this is not new information to them. I also do monthly, like newsletter, letters home to families. And occasionally throughout the year, I will include our attendance efforts and our attendance goal, so that way it kind of stays fresh in everybody's mind throughout the school year. We do have an attendance bulletin board, and that was created by Ms. Kime. We created one last year, and then we created a new one this year. And it just goes by month, and it shows the percentage each month of students that were absent. And then we also do a weekly, I guess, attendance celebration, if you will. I just announce it over the morning announcements, who's in first place for the week, who's in second, and who's in third. There's no winners. They don't win anything. They just really like hearing their grade level called, being in first place for the most students in attendance. And then I will let Ms. Kime speak about the monthly celebrations that we do.
So we kind of looked at the data, and we found that children who missed one or less days a month were the ones that never were chronically absent. So we started focusing on that. If you have perfect, or what we call near-perfect attendance, then we're doing some kind of celebration. Some months, it's as simple as, hey, come and pick a fidget or a pencil or something that you would like that's a prize. And then other months, it's a little bit bigger of an event, like our one for tomorrow, we're going to watch a short and have popcorn. They're never more than 15, 20 minutes, so they're not a big loss of instruction. And the kids who have not had perfect or near-perfect, stay in their classrooms with their teacher, and instruction just carries on. So it's not anything that's a negative. It's more of just a, hey, we want you to come to school and be excited to be at school.
So there are a lot of great things happening at Springfield. We have what we call our new beginnings program. That is our K through 5 alternative education program. We, like I said before, we have a certified teacher who actually was in a private day placement program before. And she is very wonderful at breaking things down, rewards, incentives. One of the other things that we have our students do, as you can see up there with Deputy Mike, they are our flag representatives. So these students, each day, now they have to have good behavior, but each day, they go and they raise the flag, and then they also take the flag down. Whenever we have Governor Youngkin's messages coming in, where maybe it's half-staff, it's a great learning opportunity for the students. They also know when it's inclement weather, we do not put the flag up. So they're starting to really understand that, and they take a lot of pride in doing this. Deputy Mike has even shown them how to fold the flag and unfold the flag. And they don't know this yet, but at the end of the year, when we do our end-of-year awards assembly, they will be getting an award and a pin for it. So they don't know that yet, so keep that a secret. Like I mentioned before, the Rileyville Rorton Club has been amazing. So last year, they reached out, and they started helping us here and there with small projects, and our partnership has just blossomed wonderfully. We did this summer a beautification of the school, so they came out, they helped us power wash the entire school. They helped us plant flowers, trim trees. I mean, they really made the school look so welcoming for our opening day. They provide snacks for our snack shack. So each month, they will reach out to me and ask me if we need any snacks. Snacks are for students who maybe just don't have a snack, or maybe are just, you know, getting a little hungry throughout the day. And sometimes, you know, we use it as a reward. So students might be working towards Scooby snacks or Rice Krispie treats. And then they've also attended our fall carnival, so you can see in the one picture, they had their food truck there, and they were passing out candy to our students. So it's just been a really nice partnership with them.
So High Flying Cardinals is an incentive that we use for behavior. It's kind of our PBIS. We do it every nine weeks. There are all kinds of different fun activities. We usually stop everything about 1:30, and the kids just get to enjoy an afternoon of fun. As you can see here, we make snacks. For last month, we made teeth with apples, where they use peanut butter, and then they use marshmallows to make the teeth. They have all kinds of games. You can see Melody there being wrapped up as a mummy. So it's just kind of a, let's take a break and enjoy learning and enjoy. We've been working really hard to implement the STEM that's in our building and asking the Springfield to come and do some lessons with us, and then the action-based learning.
Yeah, so we developed over the summer an action-based learning lab, and this has been really cool for me, especially. I don't always want to be a negative when it comes to behavior with kids. I like to be that positive, too. So sometimes it's nice when the teacher's like, hey, so-and-so needs a break, and they love going in here and just kind of getting their energy out. We play different types of games, little beat-back toss, and just a lot of different things. There's learning through movement. And we actually do have a school goal for homeroom teachers to use a lab at least twice this year. And it is, it's been used quite often, so I would say teachers are actually surpassing them.
Before we move on, we need to thank Mr. Hopkins for the action-based learning lab. So he helped get all that equipment. So he helped get all that equipment. Well, he helped us purchase the equipment and set up the training and show our teachers how to use it effectively. So that was much appreciated. And you can see what the lab looks like down in the bottom. We also have with that, with all of that, all those items, you can see the one little boy in the corner. We had extra, so teachers who attended the training were able to get some extra items. And so we have a lot of flexible classroom seating arrangements within our classrooms.
And what he's sitting up there has like bicycle pedals on the bottom, so he could be sitting and doing his work?
Family engagement. So we do student of the month celebrations. This was something, again, that we implemented and it's just actually continuing to grow. So we have monthly celebrations. Families are invited to attend and there is always a snack that we do afterwards. As you can see in the one picture, I mean, I don't know if you can see that little boy's face, but he is just beaming from ear to ear. Our first year that we implemented it, we had about, you know, one family member, maybe two that would come. Now, as you can see in the one picture, we have whole families. They bring their grandparents and aunts and uncles and it's becoming quite a celebration each month. We've also had our third year fall carnival. So we implemented that again this year. It's just three hours of fun for the family. We have also, it's a fundraiser too, but we have all sorts of fun things. So this year, we had a fire truck come out. We also had a bounce house for the kids. And we also implemented vendors and crafters. So people from the community were able to come and sell some of their items as well. We have face painting. I mean, and you can just see there's all sorts of games for the kids. And it's just a nice thing to do on a Saturday with the students. So we do have some upcoming family engagement events coming up. So on the 21st, we have our Thanksgiving luncheon. Run Club will actually participate in the Turkey Trot. Our winter concert is for grades three through five. And I have to say thank you to Mr. Overfelt. I don't know if he can hear me. Oh, I thought he was down there. He's right here. He has offered to play Santa for us. So we haven't told the kids yet, so they're going to be extremely excited when they see Santa come and watch their performance. In the spring, we still do breakfast with someone grand. And it's usually grandparents that attend, but sometimes we just have parents, aunts, uncles, everybody's grand, so they're all invited. And then we will have our spring concert for pre-K through second grade. We don't want to leave anybody out. And we will have our second annual bingo. Last year's bingo was absolutely amazing. So we are now planning on taking it into the gym where we will have more room for that this year.
We ran out of tables and we thought, oh, we're good. And then people come coming and coming.
We ran out.
Love their bingo.
Yeah. We found that out. So this is the end of it, but you know, we just want to say thank you. I want to personally thank all of our teachers, our staff, our community members, our parents for all of their hard work and dedication because we know it takes a village and that is part of the reason why our school is so successful. Do you have any questions?
I don't think I have questions, but I have a lot of notes. I'm so excited you all have two special education teachers now. I know that's been a lot, so that's great. And not only that, but that you all are collaborating with your special education teachers in the classroom and that there's a lot of pulling out. And I know that's needed sometimes, but being, allowing the kids to be in the classroom as much as possible, I think that's amazing. And I love that you all are really focusing on the positive with the phone calls and the letters. And even with, when you have events, you're not, you know, it's not a punishment, you have to stay in the classroom. You know, it's just really, that positive reinforcement goes a really long way. So I think that's a great, a great approach. And I do really quickly have to tell a story. So I had a kid at our after-school program who was so excited. They're like, our class is number one. And we were at, you know, 80, we're at 90. And I'm out of life. I was trying to figure it. It's really young. And I'm like, okay, you know what? I'm asking all these questions. And it was the attendance board. And he was so excited.
They don't win anything.
Yeah. But pride.
It's funny because when I have the fifth graders and they're doing the announcements, I don't show them the paper. Like I hold it up and they try to look over. I'm like, get away. And they wait and they listen. And if they hear fifth grade, I mean, they look at each other and they're like, yes. It's the funniest thing.
It's good. Well, and on that too, having the alternate or the new beginnings do the flags is amazing. And then giving them that role and that job and the pride and learning that skill and that's something they'll care about.
So we have a very young student in our new beginnings class. And even he just loves to do, I mean, he's tiny. And he just, he holds that flag, it's probably as big as him. And he holds that flag and he carries it and he loves it. And it's just been really nice to see them take responsibility and feel like they're part of the school too. Because the new beginnings program isn't just Springfield students. It's from all over the county. But when they come to Springfield, they are Springfield students.
What time do you normally do?
So they come in around 9:00 AM. So they do it when they first arrive. They come in, they put their books down, their book bags and stuff down in the office and they go right out and do it. And then they take it down. They leave about two, so they'll take it down around like 1:50-ish. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
First off, I'm grateful that we still have the community at school. And when I visit, I think.
Thank you.
And it's good to see the test scores and what's happening. And it's really good stuff. Next leadership. I know if I'm having stones with you, I could tell that. I've heard a lot of good things about you and your children, not only from our visit, but also.
I made pajamas.
Yeah, yeah.
It was pajama day when they visited. I was like, I can't do it. And I dress up free, but they.
You wouldn't want to see them. But I think, I think it's that and everything you do. A couple of things that when we at the visit, I'm sure Taylor may know it, there's a couple of things structurally on that building. The kitchen is, needs some help. And over top of the mail, I think it's the mailroom, there's a leak in the roof.
That's been fixed.
That's been fixed.
Yes, that has been fixed.
Perfect. So I'm glad to hear that. Yeah, really glad to hear that. You mentioned some professional development. And I guess for me, how do we determine when you have different schools with different teaching experience and levels, different communities? Is PD just one generic or consistent thing across the schools and the elementary school? How has that worked out between the central office and schools with input from the principals?
Yeah. So I'll answer first and then you can, and then coffee if you want to chime in. But so we have sort of a division perspective where there are things that everybody gets across the board. And they might be then divided into elementary and secondary. Like this year, elementary division focused on VLA, the Virginia Literacy Act. Secondary focused on student engagement. So things are the same across all schools for those. There may be things that are more specific. If we offer science PD for those schools that might need additional science PD. There are other specific things that might be tied to certain curriculum or to certain other needs. So they might be special education. It might only apply to special ed teachers. And then we allow principals, their goal, they have to develop some internal PD that meets the needs and works with their C-SIP plan. So their school improvement plans. And it ties back to that. So they have some discretion over that. Every PD session, there's a feedback form. So staff can offer feedback. They can also say, I want training. Because one of the questions is, what do you want training? What do you want more PD on, things like that. So it's just different. So there's a division perspective, some maybe departmental or content area, and then there's school-specific PD.
And to Dr. Fox's point, so when we have like professional development days or work days, sometimes I will get with these ladies and we just kind of talk about where we're at in the C-SIP process and things that maybe our teachers need. So as Ms. Kime explained, our teachers know the Lexia program, which is one of our reading programs, and they know it pretty well. However, we have instructional assistants that assist with the Lexia programs. So they know it, like she said, from the student's side, looking at the iPad. But sometimes we have to have an assistant cover a class or, you know, do some pull-out work. So we wanted them to understand, especially with our students with disabilities being one of our goals, really kind of how to dive into that data and what to look for and how to assist students deeper with some of those programs. So that's why we decided to do that professional development at our school.
So the assistants have PD as well?
We do. We try to give them specific sessions. Like we've done some on de-escalation strategies, things like that. We do need to do more. They're asking for more. So we will get some feedback from them on specific things. Like we also try to, you know, transportation, they do PD. We did stuff with our custodians this year, different things. So we try to hit all of the groups, not just teachers. Our principal meetings, we try to focus on some PD in each of those and the same in the assistant principal meetings when those happen.
Yeah, I think that feedback loop is very important. That's how you can adjust.
And I would encourage anybody who's listening, any teacher, any other staff member, if you think there's training or professional development that you need or you'd like, go to your supervisor. We try to, you know, send people to different conferences if we can. You know, obviously, all of those cost money. So, but there are some that we can send them to. There may be some that are virtual, things like that. So I would encourage anybody if they want more training, just to talk with their supervisor.
Thank you.
Thank you. They need it successful. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all. Have a good night.
You too. So 7.01, the minutes, the October minutes are on for docs to review. Ms. Dudley, I believe
Oh, good evening, everybody. I have for you guys an update just from what's been happening since the beginning of the year till now. I'm going to start with just kind of the agenda I have for tonight and also some of the goals that I want to cover with you guys. I'm going to start with an introduction for me because this is the first time you guys are hearing from me. And then I'm going to move on to the main clubs at the school and also the extracurriculars. Most of them have ended by now, but it's still cool to recap, see what they did, see some of their successes. And I'm also going to go over the phone policy really quick, just because that seems to be a big topic of debate and a big discussion. So for my goals, I want to give you a quick but efficient rundown of the important things happening at the school. And I want to advocate for most, if not all of the clubs and teams at the school. I'd also like to answer any questions you may have, as well as give you any context that you may be missing. And if you guys have any questions, just interrupt me. Just an introduction to me. I'm Bridget Dudley. I'm a junior at Luray High School. I participate in quite a few activities. I'm in, I'm in all of the bands, marching band, symphonic band, concert band, you name it. Some of my sports, I'm in indoor track and as well as soccer. And I, some of my clubs, I'm in SCA where I'm a class president. I'm in NHS where I'm a junior representative. I'm in the Luray Ledger, which is a literary magazine in our school, where I'm a co-editor. And I'm also in Triumph. I also attend Mass Nutt and Regional Governor's School as well as in the speech and debate and also the academic team. So clearly, I'm a pretty busy person, but all these extracurriculars give me a great opportunity to make connections all around the school. So starting with some of the clubs at the school, Future Farmers of America, they elected officials very early on in the year. And they've mainly been playing games and socializing to build community within their club. Some of the structural things that they do is they hold an opening ceremony at the start of all of their meetings. Now for Fellowship of Christian Athletes or FCA, they've been doing things similar to FFA, just team building and then figuring out ways to implement their faith into the sports that they do. Now for Family Career and Community Leaders of America, they had previously elected officials. And so they spent the first part of the year doing ice bakers and getting the new members comfortable. They also attended the state fair early in October. Triumph, this is the music society at Luray High School. This is sponsored by our music director, Jake Schupner. At the beginning of the year, they reviewed applications and accepted two new members, which is myself and a junior, or a sophomore at Luray High School, Kelly Graham. This club is pretty much just responsible for advertising, band, and choir, and anything musical, as well as holding a talent showcase tour in the spring. Now for NHS, NHS and SHH are very closely related. They are both, they both prioritize community service. National Honor Society is made up of the top juniors and seniors in Luray High School. You have to have a certain GPA to have a letter sent out to you. New members were inducted at the end of last year and were present for one meeting for the process of choosing this year's leaders. They held a drive for victims of Hurricane Helene and donated items to North Carolina, which was a big thing. We had a lot of participation in that. And they also sponsored trunk or treat alongside Spanish Honor Society. Spanish Honor Society, this is an organization for students who have taken at least three semesters of Spanish. They're very similar to NHS. They spend the first part of the year electing leaders in the club and then again sponsor trunk or treat with NHS. Now for SCA, this is one of the busiest, if not the busiest, club at our school. We have a very strong board made up of juniors and seniors, there are four of them. And their goal is to hold a school-wide event once a month. They focus on class selections at the start of the year. The beginning of the year is always busiest because of homecoming. And this year, they took that head-on. They planned a powder puff game, a bonfire, a spirit week, homecoming court, homecoming ticket sales, homecoming decorations, all the music for homecoming, and of course, the dance. This was all a major success. There was a lot of school spirit, school participation. They also sponsored a fall festival during the saplot, as well as water games towards the beginning of the year, which is where students just went out, threw water balloons at each other, had a good time. Now on to extracurriculars. Football, the most anticipated game in the season was on November 8th, the Page versus Luray game. Luray came out on top. They also held, SCA held a tailgate before the game and invited some of Page's, Page's student. We had, I think we had around 50 people RSVP to that. I wasn't sure how many showed up because I was with the band. But volleyball, their season ended on the fourth when they came up short against Central in the region quarterfinals. But I think overall, they had a very successful season. I know Reese Fitton, a junior, she just got selected for second team all-region in Cadence Cave. And I think Reese as well got selected for first team all-district. Now for cross-country, both of these teams are very strong this year, having top scores at every meet. And they're both on their way to states tomorrow at Virginia Tech. We're doing a send-off. And there's more information about that on the next slide. Our golf team, they ended a while ago, but they went all the way to regions. Their season is over, but they ended with a lot of success. It was the biggest it has been in years. There was enough to have a JV and a varsity this year, which is impressive. Now for some information about cross-country, this is only the second time ever that Luray High School has sent both a boys' and girls' team to the state meet at the same time. Historically, this is the second time a girls' team has competed and the 13th time a boys' team has competed. In recent history, both qualified for the 1A meet in 2015, and the boys competed again in the 1A meet in 2016 and the 2A meet in 2021. Now for some more extracurriculars, marching band and concert band. Marching band has grown from last year to this year. That's a big theme throughout the school and clubs, just growth, a lot of growth. The competition, as well as the home game season is over, but there was a lot of growth between each competition. We ended up getting an excellent at our assessment, which is two. Concert band, the focus has been on our winter concert and picking out music for that. Again, it's grown significantly. We're very young. Now for speech and debate, they are previously known as Forensics and Debate. It's very early on in their Shemvavful season. We went to a tournament a few weeks ago. And I have some scores for you guys. We have Mia Meyer in third place dramatic inter, Ray Hagan, first place impromptu, Kedus Davidson, third place impromptu, Maddie Maddox, fifth place extemp, Kate Scott and Mackenzie Knight, fourth place humorous duos, Evie King, third place storytelling. Kate Scott and Mackenzie Knight, fourth place humorous duos, Evie King, third place storytelling, and Lily Jenkins, third place original oratory. Again, we have, we have a pretty strong team this year. The real competition season, or like the VHSL season begins in February or March, but this is sort of the preseason, so to speak. Additionally, I want to quickly say that Speech and Debate are a united front. They have practice together, but ultimately, they're two separate competitions. Now for academic team, they had their first scrimmage against Rappahannock, Culpeper and Wakefield last Wednesday. We have a meet on Monday of next week. Now for some other events, the Kindergartner, Kindergarteners, which is the class of 2037, and the seniors, which is the class of 2025, got together to pass the torch of unity, dedication and spirit. This was to congratulate the seniors and give the Kindergarteners an incentive to continue the legacy. That was organized by our principal, Ms. Clark. And I wanted to quickly say something about the phone policy. I didn't have it in here. But again, this seems to be one of the largest topics. I wanted to note that, just from what I've seen, what we have now seems to be working really well. I personally haven't seen a phone in class. And at this point, the students who are refusing to put their phone in the caddy or whatever are making their own decision. And I think those are the students who are going to find a way to distract themselves no matter what we do. And I think that what we have now, it, there isn't much of a fight, but I think we will see that if the policy were to change, especially in the middle of the year. So that's all I have to say about that. But do you guys have any questions for me?
That's very good. You guys are doing a lot. And it's nice to hear that there's growth in whether it's sports or club or everything, because the more the kids do that is positive, the less likely they're doing something.
I really like the idea where the seniors met with a kindergarten. You probably have no idea the impact that has on those little ones. And they'll, they'll never forget that. So that's a great idea.
Yeah, it is. That's even crazy to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Seakers, monthly financials?
Yes. Good evening, board members. You have been divided with the monthly finances for October. Where expenditures and revenue were $3,850,059.29. Along with that, you have the local match calculation that we did balance with the numbers often.
Seakers, you are up again with the budget calendar?
Yes, this is our graph, budget calendar for the office for year 2026. And some of the highlights of that are January 8th, the General Assembly will convene for their short session. We do have four budget work sessions in this calendar, as well as a potential joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors in February. And then Dr. Fox to present at the end of February her proposed budget, as well as your all's priorities. March 20th, the school board is to present our budget to the Board of Supervisors. April 21st, they will have their public hearing on the tax rate and then hopefully adopt the budget. Board of Supervisors may fit with us the following. Any questions on that? We don't have to answer this as well.
Mr. Hoffmann's attendance update?
Good evening, everyone. Glad you're up here. It's a rainy night. So tonight, I'm going to present to you the attendance to this week in November. So as you can see, all of our schools are currently holding strong, well above 90%, which is sort of our benchmark. We're running above 90%. Very minimal drops, two percentage points here and there, somebody a 10th, but overall, everyone's doing very well. Due to, like Dr. Carol talked about, her efforts, all schools are doing. So they're, they're doing very well. So I know y'all like the good bar chart. So there you go. You can see very clearly, everyone's well above 90%. Of course, there are numerous diseases going around now, pneumonia, whooping cough, other weird things. So, but we're holding strong. So good job to all of our staff, our principals, our administrators, teachers. So there's a couple cute pictures of some kids, but thank you really to everyone, because this is, this truly is a team effort. From our assistants, our bus drivers, people that keep these buildings running. So thank you all. Questions?
Dr. Johnson, Human Resources and Business Operations update?
Yes. Good evening, members of the school board. I have two presentations for you tonight, one I'll deliver and one the transportation team is with us tonight and they're going to deliver. But I just wanted to give you an update, an off-the-cuff update in regards to what was mentioned about the Springfield Kitchen. Mr. Payne had noticed that, and so I thought, great, it gives me an opportunity to give you an update on that. That actually, we got a design back in the spring from a nutritional specialist. Mrs. Jeffries and Mr. Williams are working together on that. We received a design in the spring, and then Mr. Williams came alongside of Mrs. Jeffries late spring, early summer to start saying, okay, what can we do with the design? Start thinking about bids, what can we afford? The design was quite something, and maybe it was something we can do, maybe not. And then, of course, we were very, very deep into the CIP process. So both of those, the design and the information that Mr. Williams had, are now into the CIP document. And the challenge is, when you do a school kitchen, you've got a very narrow window of time to do it. So we were looking at it in the spring. It would have been great to have done it last summer, but we couldn't pull it together with the planning and the architecture and the, Mr. Williams getting the construction folks in. So it's in the CIP, depending on CIP direction. It's possibly something that, we're talking about a major renovation, yeah, because we know, yeah. I appreciate you bringing that up. What I want to talk to you about tonight is transportation safety. I've been working with a company. I've learned that this is a, a growing situation. School zones speeding and also drivers that run through a stop arm. When a bus is stopped and the stop sign is out on the side of that bus and people go through, and I hear that. I have a bus radio right outside, right outside of my office. And every now and then, I will hear a bus driver radio in and say, somebody just ran my lights, somebody just ran my sign. We try to capture license plates. We try to turn them into law enforcement. Now, law enforcement locally are really, really positive if we can get concrete information. The town of Luray secured grants not long ago, so some of our Luray Town Limit buses do have cameras on those stop arms and can get a license plate camera. But what I want to show you tonight is actually a venture that we're going to meet with county law enforcement. Sheriff Covage and the three police chiefs have all agreed to meet to explore this topic. And the topic is going to be speed cameras in the school zones and plate vehicle cameras on the school bus stop arms. We have learned that, that there is, there is a path to that. The problem, and this is a, this is a national statistic. If a pedestrian is hit by a vehicle at 25 mile, at 20 miles an hour, they have a 90% chance of survival. If that speed goes up to 30 miles per hour and you're hit, according to the National Transportation Safety Group, survival chances are down to 50%. And if you are hit at 40 miles an hour, your survival chance is 10%. It's a very scary statistic when you think about speeding in school zones or running through school bus stop arms, where we have pedestrians associated with our schools. Dakota Virginia is very clear on this. Dakota Virginia provides for speed enforcement in school zones. And, and basically, you've got to have good signage. You've got to make sure that your cameras and your radar systems are calibrated and accurate. And typically, they will, they will, they will focus on 10 miles an hour above a posted speed. There's Dakota Virginia on how much a fine can be and what can happen. This is where law enforcement comes in. We're a school system and are not going to get too caught up in, in the actual fines and the penalties. Public information campaign is very, very important if you consider something such as this. You let your public know well in advance. Flyers, letters, social media, any way possible for a long period in advance. But there are companies that will come in and set this up, and they will do it at no cost to Page County. So if we were to be able to get speed cameras and cameras on our buses on these stop arms, it would not cost the sheriff's office a penny, it would not cost any of the three towns a penny, it would not cost Page County Public Schools a penny. The reason for that is the fines, of civil fines, and that money comes back to the locality. And we're going to be working with the locality on whether this is feasible or not. There are a number of companies that do this. I don't want to get so bogged down tonight in who those companies are, but the data that we got was fascinating. In 2023, there were three, almost 324,000 citations. Civil penalty for speeding through a school zone is $100. Civil penalty for running a bus stop arm is $250. So without concrete numbers, if you take that midpoint between those two types of fines and say, oh, it's an average of $175 a fine, times 323-plus thousand citations, you're talking $55, $56 million. And that's not the issue. The issue is the outcome, which is getting people to develop safe habits in our school zones and around our buses. But that's how these systems are being paid for. Localities that are currently doing this around us, Green County is doing it. That's actually how I learned about this. Our head mechanic and Ms. Hall were involved with Green County on some bus equipment. And we learned that they ventured into this. And so I called and asked for contact and got a name, and we've been doing some homework. If you've come off of 81 on Route 33 in Harrisonburg, you know how strict that school zone is. That's one of the companies that was on the prior slide. Winchester, Winchester City is doing it, York, Suffolk, Chesterfield, this is happening. And the data behind it, that quote there on the top left, talks about going from 30,000 to less than 1,000 citations. And if you look at the graphs, the citations come down dramatically. Once people realize, I know when I pull off of Route Interstate 81 at Harrisonburg, I am super careful to hit 25 miles an hour in that stretch there. Once you realize, you pay attention. And once you get a citation or two, you pay attention. These companies would actually come in, in advance, and they would set up some speed studies in our county to say, this is what we're seeing right now. And then they would bring that data back to law enforcement and school systems and have that conversation. The same is true with the bus stop arms. Dakota Virginia has provisions for this, and it's phenomenal. They're right on those sides of our buses, they're mounted, the stop arm comes out. And if a car goes through, it captures, captures their information. I mentioned public awareness. These, these companies give you the flyers and the brochures, and these are, these are turnkey operations at no cost to a, to a locality. And then what happens is, this is where the partnership with law enforcement comes in, is there's an officer assigned to, to logging into a system and looking at the, the speed zone fines that pop up in the system, or looking at the, at the zone fines if somebody runs through a stop sign. And they process it all over, and this is just to look at what the systems look like. And only 1% of violators, the data that's been collected, up for court. 99% recognize they have captured them, you got clear video, and they pay the fine. And again, the data is such that dramatically, the localities that we've seen are seeing people slow down in school zones and behave themselves behind school buses. So I wanted to show that to you tonight, just as informational. We are going to meet, we've already organized and scheduled a meeting with the sheriff and the chiefs of police. And one of these, one of these individuals with these companies are going to come in and just present it. And we'll go from there to see if it's something that might be feasible for Page County Public Schools and, and our county at large. I think about spots such as the highway in front of the Page campus. I know when I was principal there, they, when they're northbound, coming around that bend and over that hill, they hit that speed zone fast. Same down at Springfield. They come up, come from the front wall direction up and they hit that speed zone fast. I think there might be some value to this.
One, one thing about, I, I think personally, it helps me that the rec center, and I think where else, at Stanley Elementary, they have that radar post. That, that helps me more than anything else. I'm seeing it, plus I'm checking my spirometer, it's calibrated directly, right? But I think, you know, one of the things, if you push it for the other, the arms and all those, I understand that. But I think we should, I wish they could make every school sign like that.
Yeah.
Digitally flash what you're doing. I mean, that, that's, I would, I would request that you, we press for that as well.
We can bring that up when we meet with these folks. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Because I don't want people getting tickets. I don't want tickets.
Yeah, it's not the goal. The goal, the goal is safety. Yes, yep, yep. Any questions on that? Any other? I'll invite Ms. Hall. She's going to present a second initiative that we've been working on.
All right. Good afternoon. I wanted to come here tonight because I wanted to reintroduce an attendance incentive program that we did here in the division in 2016. I felt like that it was a, I was a driver then, and I remember the incentive, and, and I felt like that it was very beneficial. I wanted to, what you're looking at here is the, it's kind of current. Like, this is, I took our employee, I've replaced them with numbers, but this is showing you where it's blacked out. This is our attendance so far, 55 days into the school year. This is how much the black dots are, how much time's been missed. Also, if you wanted to go to the, the other one. I've actually, on this one, on the, yeah. The yellow is highlighted. That shows the ones that have not missed time. We've only got 13 contracted people who have not missed time in 55 days of school that we had. So, I mean, as you can see, it is, it is, I feel like necessary that we, we try to encourage them, bring in an incentive and hope that we can get our absenteeism rate dropped. In the physical year of 2015, we spent $131,791 in sub, you know, to, to cover our routes. The year that the incentive was pushed out, that dropped to 117,850. That was just, it cost the division $5,630. But we saved almost $10,000. And that's off of the old, the old form, whereas the, the pay that came through, it started out as $10. The next month, it went up to, to $15, then $20, and $25, to 35. And then in February, it started all over again. So with that being said, I wanted to up it a little bit, make it a little more interesting for our drivers. Times have changed a lot. In the last 10 years, it's been almost 10 years since this was ran. My plan would show, starting at 25, and increase by $10 each month until they get to the end of the year. That would, if you had perfect attendance, that would equate to an $800 bonus check. So if you looked at the, the numbers right now, the difference between the old way that it was run and the new way, if nobody in my, in my department missed another day, it would cost, in the old plan, $25,760 to not cover all these subrouts. I did also want to point out, it's a difference, like, just going by this, like I said, this is, this is actually what's going on right now. This is my people. So if nobody else missed any day, in, in the new, the new way, it would cost $33,620. It's a, a difference of $7,860 from the old way to the new way that I'm trying to propose. Also, I, I give you the, the information to, you'll see- Also, I give you the, the information to, you'll see on the other, I'm sorry, keep flipping that. So on the other one, Linda, where the breakdown is. Yeah. So as you can see, the fiscal year of 2022, the, it cost the division 121,975 for substitutes. You are seeing in the fiscal year of '23 and '24 that those subs costs dropped. But what you don't see is the double runs because those don't come off of the subsidies. And in fiscal year of '23, we ran 94 double routes for the school year. Last year, we ran 244 double routes. We are already at 37 double routes this school year. So I feel like we have to try to encourage our drivers to use their time wisely. And, and I feel like if we could give them the incentive, that that would make a big difference. Y'all have any questions about the program or how it works or?
How does it funding, how does it work with the funding? Well, as far as the-
So we would have to determine if you would want to wait, pay them at the end of the year, which is based on this plan, looks like how it would build.
That's how it was, yeah.
So then at the end of the year, last paycheck of the fiscal year, June 30th, they would receive their incentive.
Okay. But to tie into your question, so Pam and I ran some numbers. So she just cited the one example where a driver potentially could get an $800 bonus check. They had perfect attendance for the whole year. If we had 60 drivers that all got public attendance for the whole year, it's 48,000. We have not seen a sub line at 48,000 in 10 years. So any way you cut it, you should save money.
Yeah, I agree 100%.
And the morale factor would be incredible.
Absolutely.
I said to Pam, I would love to see us get permission to try this because it could be a way forward for other staff. I mean, again, we'd have to do a lot of mathematical, historical digging, but we were able to do that with this. We had the data from '15 and '16. We plugged in different numbers. It was amazing, '15 and '16, the attendance rates and the money we spent on the incentive plan were almost identical two years running. So we felt like that we were getting a feel for, for what it was doing.
And I assume some of the double routes were done by the people with perfect attendance?
Yeah, absolutely.
Probably all of them, all 13 of them maybe.
How many did you do?
44. She helped me count those. And I knew, I knew last year was a big year and, and I will say that it started in January when the double routes really started getting out of hand. I mean, there were days that we had 12 people absent and we were running two and three doubles in every area. And it's a lot, the kids are late, you know, they're missing, they're missing time, they're getting home late and it's just a long day for the kids. And I feel like if we can eliminate that and even, you know, we've got more subs coming, but that doesn't, I mean, that's not going to stop our employees from taking time off. And I've already seen a lot of the time that's been taken off has been personally.
I was just going to ask, I was curious, what were the reasons?
And I, and I do have some that are, you know, that it's been illness, been death in the family, you know, surgeries and stuff like that, but we have seen, and tomorrow's another, another day, we have four doubles tomorrow.
All right. So if we would, if we had to be on our next meeting, we'd have this as approval, right? Is it retroactive? We could make it that way, right? Yeah, so you would want it.
Yeah.
Man, you brought these ideas up some time ago.
I did.
Took over and we all agreed they were good. I think it's a money saver in my opinion. And incentive is always a good thing. I suppose.
Good estimation.
Yeah, y'all did a good job putting it together.
Good evening, board members. Nice to see y'all. Come to give you a technology presentation, which is my first one ever. So very proud to be able to present that and brought Ms. Vaughn along to talk about some of the instructional things. She was very gracious enough to join me today. So started here. Just like to introduce our team because maybe not everybody knows everybody. I think you might know me as a director. Ms. Vaughn is one of our instructional technology resource teachers, along with Ms. Tracy Shiplett and Bo Brumfield. And we have our hardware manager, Lisa Shank. She is very good at what she does, coordinating inventory and making sure that everybody has what they need. I'll get into that a little bit later. And then we have our awesome technicians, Mr. Brian Vandana and Taylor Johnson. Taylor's come on very recently and he's doing a very good job. So I'm very happy to have him on board. A little bit about the hardware team. Hardware manager, Ms. Lisa Shank, she oversees, oversees maintenance and management of technology hardware, maintains inventory of devices, coordinates repairs and collaborates with technicians on deploying and troubleshooting, basically all encompassing for computers and mobile devices and everything like that. Technicians, they are boots on the ground performing the troubleshooting, maintenance and installation of the technology devices. A little bit about the technology devices. Few years ago, we did make a hefty investment into getting these Promethean panels. We have about 275 of them throughout the division. Tried to cover basically one in every single classroom. It was a huge undertaking, but I think that that's gone very well and they're very highly used across the division. Chromebooks and iPads. We have about 3,500 Chromebooks across the division, staff and students, and that's all maintained by our three-person hardware staff. Along with that, we have about 1,300 iPads that are aging and they will be getting replaced here very soon, but they do a wonderful job of keeping up with those as well. And about 600 desktops, those are mostly, you know, staff, office, and we do have a few computer science labs that are used for computer science classes across the secondary schools. Peripherals, of course, we have printers, scanners, phones and numerous other things out there that we have to maintain as well. I'm going to let Ms. Vaughn talk about some of the instructional things.
So I am one of the instructional resource teachers. And you asked a question earlier about training for staff. And one of the things that we do is help with training for staff, but we are obviously not the only ones who do that. It's one of the things we do. We provide classes in the summer that are optional, that teachers can take if they want to. So those are the nice little graphics on the side. We, we help teachers in their classroom at that moment when they need help as well. We often are training about various different things that are coming up that are new, but we're also on call for the, I need help right this minute, can you help? We're assisting teachers with implementing the technology. We're helping them to get computer science into their lessons as well. We're troubleshooting and helping them make things work correctly. So when they're having a trouble with a app not working properly, we're there. Collaborating with the teachers to help improve the educational environment and using, using technology tools in the classroom to help make learning more exciting, more interesting, more engaging and providing coaching and mentoring for teachers to help build their company. I've mentioned that we've been working on getting computer science in the school systems into the classrooms and that is a Virginia State goal. And for the last two years, we have received the ACSC grant to help us with that. Last year, we had 26 teachers. We were, they were in the elementary schools and we did over 156 lessons that have now been posted in Go Up and VA. We were actually recognized by the Department of Virginia for our Go Up and Lessons. So that was pretty cool. This year, we're working with middle school and high school. We have 11 middle school teachers and we have seven high school teachers. We're doing the same thing we were doing last year where we meet with them six different times, teach them a different computer science strand, give them sample lessons of how to integrate that into their standard curriculum. And then they work together to come up with lessons for their class. We then help them implement those lessons in their classroom. Thank. Get to me back to you.
All right. I don't really like to talk about myself, but I was encouraged to give you all a little bit of information about some of the things that I do. So just a few slides with some information about that. Just starting off, few of the responsibilities that I have as Director of Technology, obviously supervising the IT department, E-rate management, which that's filing for government assistance to help us do projects and get accrue funding for our internet and wider your network services for communication between all the schools and out for the internet. I'll go through all those, but you know, phone systems, servers, Power School, all the identity management, so accounts basically for all of the different things. State reporting through VDOE as well, and then maintaining the network infrastructure. I do get some assistance with troubleshooting, some of those things with our hardware team, but most of the configuration and monitoring of that falls down to me. A little more in-depth about Power School things. It's a whole beast on its own, but daily operation, make sure everything's running, make sure everybody has what they need, troubleshooting any issues with class sections or attendance, anything like that that might come up with any of the schools, courses, classes, everything like that. Make sure that the data is clean in there. Very important for state reporting. It's very time consuming to make sure all 3,000 plus students that are in there are coded properly. Big shout out to the schools for helping me do that because without them, it wouldn't be possible. Make sure that we do training and technical support, create user manuals. That has become a big thing this year. And just helping people know how to do certain things without having to ask every single time, just having that manual they can reference to do everyday things has been helpful this year as well. Reporting, generate reports for administrators, teachers, make sure that report cards are populated when it's time for parents to see that during the year. Plugins to Power School, those things add different features in Power School, makes it easier for people to see data and get different things out of their security. Make sure all the users have the permissions that they need to do their daily jobs and also establish and remove accounts as necessary. And then work with administrators and office staff to support all the school operations. And last one, strategic planning, this basically comes down to evaluating the division and all the tech needs and coming up with, how do we move forward? What upgrades do we need? How do we fund it? Things like that. Coordinate with Special Education Department for assistive technology needs, budgetary evaluations, sort of just managing the VPSA, the local budget as well. And then few of our key expenditures there, some of the big hitters, obviously maintaining the mobile device fleet and the best desktops, that does eat up a big chunk of the funds as well as instructional software that doesn't come cheap either. A little bit about student technology, some of the things that we do have, we do have our one-to-one program. So every student in the division does have access to an individual device, whether that be pre-K through second, which has the iPads. Every, every classroom has at least enough iPads in there for a student to have access to one every single time they go into the classroom. One-to-one Chromebooks for three through 12, we do have some in second grade, trying to help them transition in second semester to get them ready to use them in third grade. That's going to be a big push for us this year in second semester to get them prepared, ready for third grade Chromebooks. We do have the advantage of the ACSC grant has given us a lot of extra funds to be able to get some robots via headsets and other manipulatives that the ITRTs use to bring computer science into the classroom and enhance instruction.
Some of the major educational platforms that we use, Clever has been a huge improvement in our world because with Clever, the kids log in once and it logs them into most of the other sites that they use. This has saved an enormous amount of time in a classroom when you're trying to get, if you've ever tried to get a third grader to type in a URL, you would know that Clever is an amazing place. I've done it, it's not fun. It's not fun when you're trying to get a whole classroom to do it. Clever is very helpful for that. School G, which we adopted in 2020 when we had to start figuring out how to do things remotely, continues to be helpful in terms of giving a place to put the link that they need to go to. It has testing on there that is easy to use for both teachers and students. It has a nice place where you can keep track of what it is that you're missing if you're absent. We continue to use that as well. So Mastery Connect is our platform for benchmark testing. It has a robust system for being able to look at data. I know you heard earlier that Springfield meets together and looks at their data. Mastery Connect is one of the big places that we're looking at that data. It really is a robust system for looking at that. iXL is a platform that teaches and tests math, language arts, science, social studies, and even Spanish. This one has been very preferred by our teachers. They really enjoy it. The kids seem to do well with it and it's been, it's been one people. Kami is another one that came along in 2020. Suddenly we had to do things online at a level we never had to do before. Well, if you ask a kid to fill out a worksheet online, they need tools to do that. And that was a bit of a problem, but Kami is the one that gives us those tools. So with Kami, you can annotate, you can put pictures, you can put actually voice memos, all of these things into a document. This can be useful for classroom. It can also honestly be useful for other things. You can even use it to sign documents if you want to sign. You, you get an email and it says you have to sign this and email it back. You don't have to print it out, sign it, scan it, and then email it back. You can actually do that in Kami. And Newzella, we've had for quite a while, but it's also a wonderful program that gives us lots of reading material that is current and up to date on various subjects so that kids can have something interesting to read while they're practicing reading and also learn an interesting topic. It includes interactive quizzes, writing prompts, and you can write your own quizzes and writing prompts if you'd like to. Any questions about any of those? I'm happy to answer. Yes.
It varies from platform to platform. I would say the average, which all of them fairly most use, a $3 per student pricing scale, that's about the average.
And like that's all my personal, maybe students don't use so much anymore.
So most of these platforms that we've highlighted here are used a lot in the, in the classroom by students as well as staff.
So Sebastian, to answer that question, Mr. Sambo, the myself and instructional leaders and Dr. Fox sat down last year and we took every single technology piece of software that they were using and evaluated, what's the data? Is it being used vituperically? You know, what's, what's the profit of having that type of app? So we have sat down and evaluated all of that together.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, no problem. And looked at cost, how many users did we have on each platform and all of that? And I'm assuming that that's probably something that we'll start to do each year, but last year was the first time that I had ever participated in something like that. So we do evaluate that to try to get more.
Yeah. And what you're talking about, about the software review, that does go back several years. That last year was her first year, but that is a yearly process that we established about three years ago to start reviewing all of the different softwares that we had. So thank you, Mr. Chris.
Good question. It's a great question.
Yes, it is.
With that going into a crazy level of detail, I just wanted to highlight some of our cybersecurity and data privacy things. So our primary cybersecurity measures, we do have a firewall that protects everybody in the division from intrusions and malware, all that fun stuff. That will be going into life in the next three years, but it has been in place since 2018. So it has given us a very long service life for what it actually costs. We do have content filter line wise that does provide us with safeguarding student browsing. That also gives us a classroom management piece that teachers can go in and build out their classroom. It shows the student's Chromebook screen right there on the screen and they do have the option to put in rules and focus kids in to eliminate distractions from being able to access other things. We're hoping to get some more buy-in to that, but there are quite a few teachers out there that do make very good use of that. We do have our antivirus program on all of our desktop computers. That also kind of provides us with some additional malware and virus support. us with some additional malware and virus support. And we do have a backup solution for all of our servers that we have, it backs up all the critical data, in case anything were to go down, we'd be able to recover in fairly short. Some of the recent upgrades, again, this is my first presentation to you all, some of these things do go back a few years, but I just catch you up with some of the big things. We did increase, in summer of '23, we did increase our network capacity to five gigabits for internet for the whole division, that was a huge upgrade. And each location does have access to two gigabits of that. Very, very little slowdown across the division. Summer of '22, we were fortunate to use E-rate and do a wireless system upgrade refresh from our initial investment in 2015. That was huge, very, very few wireless issues now. With there, 500 access points and 70 network switches were replaced across the entire division, so basically one access point in every single classroom to be able to handle the 30-plus devices that are in every single room, so it is a very robust system. Back to fall of 2021, that's where we upgraded all of our servers and implemented, implemented the cybersecurity, the data backup, so all of that backs up every single night. And then 2020 through 2024, kind of as money was available, all of the servers, network switches, everything is on a backup battery, so when the power flickers or goes out, we do have things that will provide power for a limited amount of time, it's usually about half hour, 45 minutes, so elongated power outages, the equipment still will go down and then we'll lose internet, but only so much we can do. This past summer, we had a lot of accomplishments. Would dare say this was the busiest summer that I've had in my 13 years that I've been. So that contributed to that was the 300 new phones that we put in the classroom. Special thanks to Ms. Vaughn, she is not a technician, but she carried on with, we did happen to lose one of our people, moved on, and in that transition phase, she picked up and was helping us install those phones in inventory, so big thanks to her. And also Taylor for when he came in, he just sort of picked up and ran with it, so not to take away from any of the other contributors, but special thanks to those. Virtual reality headsets, we did expand our fleet, we have 87 of them now, that's not counting the ones with Mr. Kale Bot, but those are specific to Page High, but our fleet alone is 87, and that does allow us to have three sets, I believe, to use around the school, somewhere around there. Yeah. So Chromebooks and iPads, repairs, inventory management, redeployment. Every summer, our three-person hardware team processes over 3,000 mobile devices, that's iPads, making sure that they're updated and cleaned, same goes for Chromebooks, any repairs, keyboards, screens, making sure that they're up to date, all that occurs during the summer. We are trying to redo a little bit of that timing so that it doesn't hit so hard during the summer and accomplish that throughout the school year, because when we have big projects in the summer, that tends to take up a lot of other time, it was very hard to complete everything, we did somehow manage to get it done. And the network, Grove Hill, we did enhance some of the network infrastructure to support the Keys Academy going in there, that was something that was already on my radar, but sort of brought it to the front burner, was to upgrade some of that stuff there, so I'm very pleased at how that looks now compared to what it did before. And looking ahead, some of the things that are coming up, we are in the last year of our internet contract, so that expires on June 30th, 2025. I've begun the process yesterday, actually spent the whole day making two RFPs, one for the internet services to be able to put that into the E-rate system. And the second one is the network switches upgrade. Most of our top rack switches will handle all the routing and everything between the network closets and between buildings are going end of life in fall of 2025, and they've had a very long service life as well. So I do have quite a bit of remaining category two E-rate funds that will help fund that purchase, but I'm hoping to get everything replaced and see that stuff go well into the 2030s. And then hardware and mobile devices, we're going to continue to invest in desktops, Chromebooks and iPads, make sure that we keep things running as smooth as they can, make sure everybody has what they need to do their job. That's all I've got. Y'all have any questions?
I just got a couple.
So the Chromebooks. He's talked about, I've already talked about it, the keyboard doesn't match. What'd he say? I'll step aside. You want to, well, I'm just, you know, is that going to ever change future Chromebooks? Or is that an option already, or?
So we obviously don't have a choice in what the manufacturer chooses to put on the Chromebooks. They do have a fairly standard keyboard, there are a couple of differences. Most, most things are the same.
I would say that the kids, since they're using Chromebooks, they're steadily having to do for me.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. The third, the citizen comment about the third-party software, I guess y'all are going to talk about that maybe, or I don't, I don't know. We just, I would, I would request some more information on that.
We can get you.
And, you know, these things are a necessary evil. They can steal an hour of your time in no time, and they listen to everything you say. So if you're, I'll probably get some ads about things we're talking about tonight, it's just the way it is. And then that Mastery Connect, I would like to get a demo of that for the, for the school board, if that's possible.
Which one?
The Mastery Connect, that's where most of a lot of the data comes from, I think. I'd just like to see how that's mined and how it works. That's just a request.
If I could like to address the, the comment prior to that. There are a lot of things changing right now, a lot of AI things coming in, there's a lot of, Virginia has implemented a huge change to their student data privacy laws. No question about that. That is something that me and Dr. Huber and Dr. Fox, we know, and we are already in the works of working towards a better solution.
Okay.
And making sure we're transparent about that, having policies in place, making sure that we're compliant with those laws. It's just a huge undertaking with policies that have been changed, but we are feverishly working towards having that.
Okay, so the concern was legitimate.
I won't speak.
Okay, you can speak, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Love you a lot.
Yes, Mr. Kale and your guests, thank you for your patience.
Yes.
Sorry, action needed, yeah. So, Board, what I have for you tonight are just some policy updates. I'm not going to read through them for you, the, the front page that you see here lists for you a summary of the changes, some of them are very minor, others are just the addition of a few words, so you'll see them in the context, they're either underlined or in bold for you. So I would ask that you review these prior to the next board meeting, we'll bring them back for action. Certainly if you have any questions, just reach out to me, make sure you know and have an understanding of what those changes are prior to the next meeting.
Okay.
Yes, so just a short, somewhat short update for you this evening. Again, I just want to thank Mr. Kale and his, his guests this evening, and to our technology staff, I think you said it very well, a mighty, mighty group, small group, but doing a lot of different things, so thank you, Mr. Samples and Ms. Vaughn and your whole team for all of your work that you guys do, we appreciate it and makes things like this happen as well. Just, we want to take, on Monday was obviously Veterans Day, so we want to take a moment as a division to thank all of our veterans and their families as well, because families help make them be able to do the things that they do, so thank you to all of our veterans and their families. And 35 years and counting at Page County High School, so, Mr. Kale, to you and your staff, kudos for the, the breakfast and the assembly this past Monday, it was, I would say a moving experience, for sure, to, to see, and one of the veterans there was over, I believe, over 100, correct? It was 101? And he was there and stood up every single time that he needed to stand up. And so it was a moving experience to see that, so thank you to you and your staff for that, and again, 35 years that that's been going on, so we look forward to continuing that tradition. And also just a thank you to all of our other schools, everybody did some things differently, so there were assemblies going on, there were announcements, social media posts, things like that across the division, so thank you to our schools for taking time to recognize our veterans this week. Just a quick update, didn't give you an update on enrollment last month, so wanted to show you where we are right now, based on our, if you recall, our FY25 budget ADM number was 2880, so we're sitting at about under 40 students right now, and that's not unusual to be at that place this time of year, so not something to be concerned about, it'll fluctuate a little bit more, but if you recall, we went up a little bit on that number, so we're sitting just under about 40 students. We wanted to share this with you because we thought, one, you would appreciate it, and two, it's worthy of being shared, but this is an example of using our students and allowing them to have real-life experiences as they go through the work that they're doing in the classroom. So there's a handrail outside of Stanley Elementary that needed to be replaced, we had gotten quotes for it, and it was pretty expensive to have it done, and we just said, we can do that, we have the kids and the know-how and the staff to do that ourselves. And so Mr. Williams connected with Mrs. Pettit, Mr. Pitts, and Mr. Morris, who's the welding instructor, and they took care of that project for us, and in the process, our students, again, got real-life experience with it. So this is the rail that they created, they, they planned it out, they went over, visited, talked with people about what the need was, planned it out, designed it, welded it, painted it, and when they installed it, they ran into some issues because the concrete's a little bit old, so they had to work through some issues on how to navigate the problems of installation to make it safe and all of that, so just a wonderful hands-on experience for them, and we're so proud of that collaboration, so we wanted to highlight those students and thank them, as well as Mr. Morris, the instructor, for being willing to do that, because that's outside of the scope of the normal learning, but what a great experience for those students, and we get a great product out of it, that we only had to pay for materials and supplies, and then the outcome there, the kids getting that, that life experience, so kudos to everybody involved in that project. Just a quick update, because it's hard to believe that we're coming to the end of this year, and in January, things start to rock and roll, but around the February timeline, we start bringing you draft calendars. We're going to do something a little different this year, Dr. Johnson and Dr. Huber are working with our calendar committee, which has representatives from all of our schools across the division, and some of our staff from different job positions, they're going to draft calendars for the next two school years, so that we'll present to you. It's helpful for parents and some others who like to see, to plan out vacations and things during the summer and times like that, or spring break events and things like that. So we're going to present to you two years this year. The survey has been out and gathered some feedback from faculty, staff, and from parents and guardians, we had about 732 total responses to that survey. So, excuse me, again, drafts of those, what the calendar committee come up, will go out to the schools and to staff, they'll provide feedback, and then we'll bring you, we'll present to you a draft calendar for you all to review and vote on in February. So be looking forward to that, and our goal is to have those approved in March, and then we can push them out. Tomorrow, at the Technical Center, we're honored, Page County will be hosting, this is the first time in my tenure that we'll be hosting this event, this is the Bring Your Legislator to School event, in November, it takes place every year, we're going to host this at the Page County Technical Center tomorrow, so five different school divisions will be participating, and there's a list of the legislators or their legislative assistants who will be present, so we're looking forward to that event, it's an opportunity to kind of put in front of legislators some of the things that we're going to be focusing on or we'd like them to focus on. Page County, our slant is going to be money for school construction and talking about funding for reading specialists in support of the Virginia Literacy Act, not just at the elementary level, but at the middle and the high school level. And so other superintendents will come with other things, so the legislators here are a broad swath of different topics that we'd like for them to consider as they begin their legislative session in January. It is also time where we start talking about budget and that fun stuff. So as Ms. Seacrest shared earlier, you've got your budget calendar to review, we'll bring that back to you next month, but the governor will release, it's, we're in the second year of the biennium, so it theoretically should be an easier process. We know two years ago that wasn't the case, but it is a second year, so he could present amendments to his biennial budget, those will come out by the 18th of December, so we'll know if there's any adjustments to the funding that's already been outlined. General Assembly Session, again, this is the short session, convenes on January 8th and adjourns on February 22nd. Ms. Seacrest, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Huber and I, we've been reviewing budget requests from schools and departments through one-on-one meetings, those have been very, very helpful, principals or department heads are walking us through their requests, so not only increases to their line items, but then additional requests that they'd like. The challenge then comes taking all of those requests and narrowing them down to establish some priorities or things that we might be able to tangibly put into a budget to then bring to you all and share with you. So if you all will remember, just take a look at that school board budget calendar, we do have a tentative date for our joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors of February 18th, so let me know if that date doesn't work for you all. If we approve the calendar at the next meeting, we'll make sure that we coordinate with the Board of Supervisors. And then we will, obviously, we always meet with them to discuss different things. So homework for you all, as we begin to go down the budget path, I need you to begin thinking about things that you'd like us to have considered, you've been out talking to staff, different things have come up. Be ready, create a list of those things, because usually the very first presentation that I do for you in January, I ask you to kind of tell me what some of your priorities are, so we can begin putting those in, and taking, looking, taking a look at them if we have to figure out costs and things like that. Also, if there's other information that you want us to share, either with you all or with the public, or things that you'd like to have discussed. Last year, we chose to do sort of a very, sort of budget 101, if you recall, because we had a couple of new board members, so there's things like that that we can do if you want more insight into the budget. So you guys have a homework assignment for us as we begin the budget process. And then lastly, just a reminder that Thanksgiving break this year is the November 27th through the 29th, and all of our schools and offices will be closed, we want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and to say to all of our faculty, our staff, everybody, how grateful we are for all of the work that they do every day, because none of what you saw tonight happens without the good people behind it making, making it happen. So thank you to everybody, and we certainly wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Any questions?
Great, thank you. Mr. Kale, again, thank you all for being so patient and, and joining us for our entire meeting. We appreciate it. You are up with the approval of Page County's school building request.
So first of all, thank you all for letting me speak again tonight, and special thanks to the folks I brought with me, Ms. Adrian Martin, Mr. Daryl Short, and Ms. Andy Short, and special apologies to their backbones and their spines, chairs that they are sitting on. I'm glad you took that as a joke that it was me, so I appreciate that. So just a little update, this was one of the things that I asked for you guys to see, this was, was one of the pictures that I was really pleased with, this is if you're at like an aerial view of our building, if the roof was off of it, but you can see, that's kind of a rendering of what we're hoping that it will look like on the inside. And yesterday, on the 13th, Mr. Short, Mr. Williams, from Page County Public Schools, and Ms. Martin and I met and did a kind of a walk around the area, just to kind of get a final look of what everything's going to look like. And so here's some of the items that we discussed, we did locate water and electric hookups, and it's a little more easier with water than what it had been, what we had thought, so that was really, really a good thing that we did yesterday. Again, special thanks to the Short family and Ms. Martin, the building and zoning permits have been approved, and the only change that we've got is that even though the building is commercial, we're on an agricultural district, so we can actually move the building closer, and we will have looked at it, we can butt right up against the sidewalk with a ramp, so we will be ADA compliant from the jump, so we don't have to worry about that, we're not going to be 30 feet away, we're going to be a lot closer, it'll be, it won't be five feet, but it will be close, like I said, we'll be ADA compliant quite quickly. As of today, we've received $15,000, $15,800 in cash donations, and that does not include the donation from Lance Construction at a Broadway. I asked Mr. Short yesterday, we were meeting, and I said, are we still taking donations? And he looked at me and said, we're always taking donations. So, I appreciated that. Any excess funds, it's going to go right into the building. We can upgrade equipment for Ms. Carlson. Ms. Martin is really excited about some of these state-of-the-art training tables that we can get there, so she's really looking forward to those. So, she was excited about that. We've received twelve-thousand dollars of donations, things, in-kind donations like flooring, HVAC, insulation. That includes Ridgeview Millwork, again, with Mr. and Ms. Short, their contribution, which you couldn't do. Their contribution is about ten-thousand dollars just from that company as well. So, all together, with those in-kind donations, monetary donations, we're right at thirty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred, which I know Mr. Short does not let the grass grow under his feet. He greatly, Page County High School is greatly appreciative of him and his family and what they've done for that, for our school, and what we're looking forward to have happen. So, basically, what we're looking at, and like I said, he doesn't let the grass grow under his feet after approval, if we get approval, construction will begin immediately. And I asked Mr. Short, and I said, what's our completion date? What's, you know, what are we looking at? And I said, are we looking at the fall of twenty-twenty-five? And he goes, yeah, we'll go with that. So, I, I know Mr. Short well enough. I, I think if the weather is, is, is good, and I think we'll be well ahead of that deadline. So, that's, that's it. I do have a couple of things for you. Did bring in, this is what the siding will look like on the building and metal roof on top of the building. Examples of what we'll have, and what it'll look like, and it'll match the, out back of Page County High School, so it's not going to clash, it'll blend right in with the building and what it already looks like. So, pretty pleased with that.
So, what approval do we need? Is, what's the overall budget?
Forty? No, it was forty?
We got, we got, money's good.
Yeah, money's, you don't hear that very often, but the money's good.
Yeah, that's right, especially in Page County. But as far as equipment in there, is that going to be, how is that going to, and what can we have?
Through these funds, the excess funds are going to be used for that equipment.
Okay.
Training tables, again, we can always upgrade those. Ms. Carlson has looked at just upgrading some of the equipment she has. She's got some storage areas that she can use, new, I guess, she wanted an ice machine that she could use possibly. Again, these are some, we weren't expecting that we can get. So, those are things. But it will go directly in this building. More state-of-the-art, the better. We want to make the best product.
An ice bath, right?
If we can have it, you know, those are things that we can, so, we, yeah, just looking forward to it.
Okay.
So, to answer your approval question tonight, you guys will, if you wish, you can approve it and allow them to begin.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the Page County High School budgeting, our building request as presented with the previous meeting and this meeting here.
Special Minister Painter, a second by Ms. Alger to approve the Page County High School building request. Are there any other, I don't know, Mr. Overfelt, do you have anything? I don't know if there are any other questions or comments. Mr. Overfelt. This is.
We need your approval.
We're voting, we're voting. Mr. Overfelt.
Yes.
Ms. Alger?
Yes.
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 Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What we'd like to do is, once we're finished, I know you guys have Board Mews playing, but have a board meeting at Page, and do a tour once we're all, all complete the project. Love to have that. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Seacrest.
Yes, good evening again, board members. You have been provided with the claim certification for the operating fund is six-hundred-sixty-two-thousand-eighty-six dollars and fifty-three cents, capital improvement fund, six-thousand-twenty-four dollars, food service fund, sixty-thousand-six-hundred-seven dollars and forty-one cents. Total expenditures, seven-hundred-twenty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred, sorry, seven-hundred-seventeen dollars and ninety-four cents. Along with that, you have the listed claims as well as the check registers. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer those.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the claims for payment as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Painter, a second by Ms. Sullivan-Smoot to approve the claims for payment as presented. Mr. Overfelt.
Yes.
Ms. Alger?
Yes.
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 Yes. Ms. Seacrest.
Yes, we have two purchase, purchase orders over ten thousand for your consideration this evening. The first is for the early childhood teacher, special education purchase services, vendor services. And the second is special education, as well as instructional planning services for things like free referrals, five-by-four plans, and, you know, if you have any questions, myself and for the team, we'll do our best to answer them.
Motion, we approve the purchase orders over ten thousand.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alger, and a second by Mr. Painter to approve the purchase orders over ten thousand.
Ms. Alger?
Yes.
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 Yes. Dr. Fox, the Provost School Board meeting, is available change?
Yes, we would like to adjust the start time of the December twelfth meeting from six-thirty to four-fifteen P. M. So, if you all approve, we'll advertise that and make sure everybody's aware that is to accommodate for the Lorraine Town. Three-thirty will be closed session. Yeah, open session will start at four-fifteen.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we move the December twelfth meeting to four-fifteen.
Second.
With a motion by Mr. Painter, and a second by Ms. Sullivan-Smoot, who adjust the December twelfth.
Why?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Word member comments?
A lot of good information shared tonight. I couldn't be more prouder than what's going on in the Page County Public School system, and it takes a team. And I, we couldn't have it any better, as far as everybody working together and focusing on not just what's best, well, what's best for everyone, especially the children. And again, you're to be commended and keep up the good work, because I know it's a lot, but it's going to pay off in the long run.
Yeah, so I think Ms. Dudley kind of nailed it. The theme is growth. You know, there's a lot of growth all around. And I know with growth, sometimes there are growing pains. But, you know, I think I'd rather have pain of growth than, you know, any other pain. So, yeah, I'm just pleased for everything we heard. I really love the full circle, full circle things that we're seeing with the building at Page County High School, being the idea of a student, and then the tech students, tech center students fixing the railing at the elementary school. Yeah, it was, it was a really good meeting. I'm walking out, but a really good night. Good thing.
And also, Ms. Dudley, your presentation tonight, God, well done. I'd like to have a little bit of your energy. So, if you ever need to get rid of any, I'll be glad to take some.
You did a great job, Ms. Dudley. Thank you for the presentation. And like what Taylor was saying, you know, growth or even just goals can create some hard situations, but that's how we continue to grow, right? We push through. So, thanks to everybody for their patience and working hard. Tonight was just a lot of community. I love how busy the schools are. I'm grateful for, you know, the citizen who came. I'm grateful for Springfield, having the, the Ruitans who are chipping in there, the Shorts with Page County High School. It's, it's really a great feeling to see all the community come in and support these schools and support the students. So, a big thank you to everyone. And of course, to the tech staff, you guys are very busy. Thank you, thank you for what you do. It's, it's a very small staff to take on what you guys have. So, we appreciate that very much.
So, it's Thanksgiving, and it's good to have an attitude of gratitude. And I appreciate everybody here in the schools, the IT group. I mean, you guys are always on the move. It's no grass growing any feet, for sure. Great presentation. Springfield was a great presentation. The veterans thing, that's, that's also a hundred and one years old. That, that's, that's great. And I think, I echo everybody else's sentiment there. We're heading in the right direction. And I would, I would love to see what this place is going to look like in four more years. I think it's going to be outstanding if we can keep things together, keep moving forward. So, thank you, everybody, for what you did. Thanks.
Mr. Overfelt, do you have anything?
I want to keep my comments under four minutes. Anyway, no, yeah, it was a good meeting. I'm sorry I was there. A minute's time, I was making, luckily I had time to get this live. I would like to, got to hand it to the IT department. That was a good presentation, a lot of stuff there. I would like to see the results of the, the topic review. That would be very interesting. And I think it would also be nice to see, I'd like to see some of the schools improve their use or their, uh, feedback on the IT use and so forth in their presentation that they give. That'd be, that'd be very interesting. I think they'll, we'll start looking at Google for, see new software, internet, et cetera. Uh, yeah, that's, that's one of the thoughts. And the, I was really impressed by the fact that we're doing self-help. I thought that, I thought that was great. We did something for ourselves out there by building that railing. And I'm hoping that we can, and maybe in our tech center, so that we can see army guys, their weaponry, and a lot of self-help projects. I think that would be really great. I think we should still on, have a little business on the eighteenth. That's Monday. I'll be back for that. Mr. Painter, are you still on?
Yeah.
And, uh, after that, uh, have a good night.
Thank you. Sebastian, Bridget, do you all have any comments? You guys have been troopers, I would like to say. We're going to V S B A next week, and you're attending, so we're really happy that you guys are attending that with us again and gone there to learn. So, thank you for taking time, taking time away from school to come with us.
I make a motion, we.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I, I thought you were asking this.
Yeah, do you guys, yeah, I, I just wanted to say that on my ass.
If I could say, well, let me start off. I'm sure y'all heard me sit down here. I swear I don't have to. Been working in poultry lot last week, and I, and my average is just crazy. But I'd like to start out saying that she did a fantastic job with her first ever presentation. Um, we, oh, and I was thinking up and turning that, I didn't think, the, this presentation talking after that was a class, the desktop thing. I mean, the teacher didn't speak too well, like not having the constant interruptions over teaching. Like, I don't think any of y'all realize how much from instructional, instead of, you know, the one, the player, the other one. But now that they can just call that phone, like teacher can turn it over down, it makes everything conversationally. Um, also, I'd like to say that our, our show, that we have, so we get over eighty cars. We raised over three thousand. And all of the money too was there. So, like, our food is all covered by the park west, we have a lot of sponsors there. And many of y'all are interested, we're selling tickets for chicken hats. Money's due November twenty-second, and it's the first Friday of December when we're giving out. And we took them off.
I just really enjoyed the community that was showing. It's kind of really, it's really enjoyable seeing it all come together and the meeting to create very positive, definitely.
Thank you all, and we do wish that everybody has a happy Thanksgiving. We will be busy next week at V S B A. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Ms. Brian?
Yes.
Mr. Overfelt?
Yes.
Ms. Alger?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.